Now.
All right, we're recording. Good evening, everyone. Let the April 2021 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting come to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible liberty. Thank you, everyone. Madam Mayor, would you give us some memorials, please?
Good evening, everyone. Let's please have a moment of silence for the deceased residents of the borough for the month of March 2021. Stephen Roushi. Dolores Andrews. Anne Segge. Maurice O'Connor. Samuel Vivekio, a former Brookhaven police officer. Marshall Evans, Jr. Deborah Downey. Elizabeth Eller, our retired Chief Eller's wife. And Robert McMaster. Thank you.
I'll do it Sunday.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Willard, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, uh, Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Spooks. This is Heller.
Here.
Oh, let's hear. Uh, Mayor Leslie.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Vasquez.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Wiki.
Here.
Mr. Pappas.
Okay.
Mr. Pappas is having technical difficulties. He will be on shortly, hopefully.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gilroy.
Mr. Gilroy is away on business. He will be a few minutes.
I will check him off.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Willward's here. Is Mrs. Boyle on?
Joan is on, yes.
Uh, Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Zebly.
Present.
Roll call complete.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Ms. Ford, would you give us the Coburn Elementary report, please?
Ford, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, on the week of March 22nd, PDSD welcomed back all of our students in grades K to six to in-person learning, following new health and safety guidelines. Um, the students are now attending four days per week in person. Previously, we had Cohort A, Cohort B. Uh, the students were split into Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday cohorts, and now everyone is back together, uh, learning in person. And that began, like I said, for K to five and actually grade six and nine as well, um, the week of March 22nd. Wednesday remains a virtual day for all students. Um, and PDSD cyber is also still an option for families who choose to remain fully virtual. Um, tomorrow, we're welcoming back the remaining Northley and Sun Valley students to four days of in-person learning. Kindergarten registration is now open online for anyone that may have a kindergarten student. Um, we do all of our kindergarten registration now online. All kindergarten students are registered by April 23rd. Will be included in the lottery for AM and PM kindergarten slots. Um, we have to go to a lottery because of course AM is typically, uh, you know, the coveted slot. And so we now do a lottery and, uh, everyone who registers before the 23rd will be part of the lottery. You can certainly register online after the 23rd as well. Um, the Pendel, the Pendelco kindergarten is a half-day program. Each student is assigned either morning or an afternoon class and to be eligible for admission in September 2021. Children must be five years of age by September 1st, 2021. There are no exceptions to the cutoff date. And again, to be included in the lottery for AM, PM, uh, April 23rd is the deadline for that. Um, at Coburn Elementary School last month, we celebrated Read Across America Week. Students and staff celebrated to raise, of course, reading awareness and celebrate reading. We had Spirit Week and themed books were read aloud throughout the reading throughout the grades K to five. A read aloud was happening along with fun activities. We also celebrated World Down Syndrome Day in March. Um, Coburn Elementary, along with all the other PDSD schools, celebrated Rock Your Socks Day uh, to raise awareness for World Down Syndrome. Uh, students and staff are encouraged to wear their crazy socks on March 21st, which fell on a Sunday this year. Students rock their socks on Thursday and Friday. Socks are sold at $2 per pair and all prepare across the district. And all proceeds benefit the Down Syndrome Association. This has become an annual event at Pendelco. And, um, everybody, you know, it's, it's, we get a high participation rate. Kids can wear their own socks that they have at home, or they can purchase the socks for $2, but it's always a lot of fun. And it's certainly a worthy call, and we're happy to participate. And finally, we had the Kid's Heart Challenge. Uh, Coburn Elementary students participated in the Kid's Heart Challenge and raised over $7,500 for the American Heart Association. All students, both cyber and in-person, had the opportunity to participate throughout a two-week period that runs through March 5th. And that is the update for Coburn Elementary and follow us on Twitter if you'd like to see all the exciting events that are happening daily.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Have a good evening.
You're welcome. You do the same. Thank you.
I have a question for Mrs. Ford.
Yeah.
Are you, are the kids still doing reading counts?
They are, yes.
How's that going?
It's going well. I, um, I actually was going to do the list this month. We have quite a few kids who are million-word readers, so I wasn't quite sure. Um, certainly, yeah, I'm not sure, uh, if I should just read the names or if possibly there's going to be an in-person meeting eventually. We can invite all the kids to that meeting.
With the, um, with the current capacity limits, we would be unable to do so, or we would be at, we, I think we're permitted 20 individuals in the council chamber right now. That includes, uh, 12 or 13 officials, so we, we would be able to have seven members of the public. Um, I don't want to tell you how to do, how to do your job, but I maybe punt it until June or, or wait and see this month as the vaccination count rises, see if the governor increases the capacity limit.
And certainly.
If that makes sense, which I expect. And it is what largely expected to happen, so.
Um, yeah, definitely. I, I, you know, I've been sort of, uh, going back and forth with it. I certainly can, uh, you know, at some point, if, you know, it looks like it will stay, uh, virtual, then I will certainly do the list and of course send it over to the borough as we always do. And the, and we'll recognize all the students, which is really wonderful that, uh, that that happens all the time, that you recognize them with certificates.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, I agree. We'll play it by ear and see what happens. And, um, you know, well, we have a plan in place, though.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
You're welcome.
All right, before we begin public discussion, is there a representative that would like to speak for the new development in Arlington? Please unmute yourself. I, I unmuted all the guests.
Yes, uh,
and state your name and address, please.
Uh, Walt Patrick, 3730 Arlington.
Good evening, Mr. Patrick.
How are you doing?
Good, sir.
Uh, the, uh, the question, uh, that I had, um, had to do with, uh, you know, uh, the UNO, the final UNO for, um, you know, for 3730 as well as the other six residences, um, on Arlington and West Brookhaven Road. Just wanted to get an idea of, um, you know, what's the, uh, the, uh, schedule, uh, for getting it done? And, um, just, just wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
Mr. Willard has an explanation as to why it happened, and, uh, if need be, after Mr. Willard speaks, we can, uh, move on to the engineer Charles Catanian. John, do you have, uh, do you have an explanation for the group?
Uh, yeah, I, on the tax side of it, um, as far as the certificate of occupancy, I'm, I don't have an answer for that. But the, um, I called Jim Smith today. And what's happened is, um, the taxes that were assessed on those lots were based on an empty lot with a piece of ground. Um, the, we send in permits to the, the, the county, which, um, on a new home initiates a, um, a, uh, review of the property to assess the value. And then the homeowner would get a letter from the county saying, this is your assessment. And I believe the homeowner has 60 days to, um, to appeal that. And then at that time, the borough would then get the assessed value of the property and initiate a tax on the property. And we can't do that until we get that from the county. Now, I talked to Jim today. The county is aware and they have this, they have put it on their list, or they've already dispatched, um, people to go out to, to do the assessments. Um, Jim has, um, said that he was going to be calling, uh, I don't know who's on here now. Uh, who, who's the gentleman that's speaking?
Um, Walter Patrick.
Okay, well, the gentleman I've had today, um, Ben, was his name Ben? He's going to be talking to, um, the tax collector on Wednesday. He wants to speak to him. He's a neighbor of yours. Uh, he's the tax collector, uh, as he explained it to me, he would explain it to him. And he said he would pass on the information. But basically what the, the rest of it would be is that you would get then a tax bill sometime after that 60 days. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly, and that gets you really close to the next year. So that's, that could be a problem if you have to pay taxes in August, and then you're going to pay them again in January. So the, 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 um, and, and I don't know, uh, I just found this out today. I haven't had a chance to back it up, but Jim Smith said he would send out the taxes for the sewer and the trash now. And then you would, soon as we had the assessment for your home, you would get the borough, uh, the borough tax. So that would be a little bit of a ease on you because you would only be paying for the trash now instead of paying for all three when the bill comes in. Um, but I, council has to advise on whether they want, if that's okay to do, and if that is, and if that's what the residents want, Jim said he could send the bill in for the sewer and the, um, trash. And you could get that taken care of. And then once the assessments are out from the county, the only thing you would be responsible then is your assessed value on your home, the tax for that. Um, I know there were some questions about, uh, who, who decides the amount? Uh, for Delcora, uh, we get a, an amount every year, and that's divided by the, the homes here and the, by their, their, um, the way they're zoned. And that number is, is comes up, come, is, comes up to be what it should be for whatever zone you're in. Uh, R1 zone or a commercial zone, it's, they're all, there's all different amount. And then, um, that I, that I'm aware of. And then the other thing was the, um, geez, I lost my train of thought. Uh, the other one was, um,
Trash?
Uh, the trash fee, that's based on, um, our, the bid that we put out, that we take the lowest bid, and then that's divided between the households also. So if, basically, if you want, if, if the residents want, we can, Jim said he would send the bill with trash and, um, the sewer on it. And then the only thing they would need to wait on would be whatever the county comes up with with their assessments. I hope that's right. That's what I was told today. Um, if anybody else is on there, needs to correct anything I said, please do. But that's what I, that's what my conversation was with him today.
All right, and Mr. Mr. Patrick, you can digest that and get back to us after talking to, uh, to, to Jim Smith, the tax collector. Um, you don't have to give us an answer tonight. If, let us know if that's satisfactory to resolve your issue. Go ahead.
The, the gentleman that, that Jim's calling is, I have to look it up. Uh, his, it's Mike, um, S C H I A V O N E.
Yeah, I believe Mike's on the call.
Oh, okay. Yeah, uh,
No, he's not. No, he's not. My mistake.
Okay.
I am on the call.
Okay.
Oh, you are.
Uh, yeah, he, he, they have an appointment at 10, he has an appointment, Jim has an appointment at 10 o'clock to call him, uh, to call Mike to, uh, on that on Wednesday.
Yeah, thanks. I do have a question related to the taxes, though, in that a few of us have already received borough tax bills, so we're just wondering what was that for? Now that you're saying that you don't have anything from the county yet.
Well, what, what was on your tax bill? I mean, the tax bill should have all three taxes on it, the sewer, the trash, and your, uh, real estate.
It was just the real estate. There was no sewer and trash.
And it, was that for like $150?
Ours is $193.
Yeah, that was based off the land alone. The tax collector's gonna have to resolve that.
The only thing, the only thing that county has on record is the land. And the land, that's what, that's what you, that's all the tax that you're being taxed for is the land right now. So once they come out and assess your entire property, that's gonna, obviously, you wish you could keep it that much because that would be great, but it's gonna change.
Okay, thanks for explaining that. I'll let you get back to the CO issue that Walt has.
Charles, can you answer that, Mr. Catania?
Let's see. Final COs are, are subject to the developer coming back and finishing the, the final grading and lawn restoration. I, uh, Bob Grant and I have been in touch with him and at least met with him at least twice in the last month on that, uh, phone call today indicates that he'll be back, uh, Wednesday to start finishing off that work.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Pat, Mr. Patrick and your group, if, um, if you don't see them back or if this drags out, contact us, please, and we'll help, we'll help you through this until it's all resolved.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Catania, uh, I, I appreciate that information. Any idea on, you know, once it, if it does begin on Wednesday? Um, uh, any idea on, you know, your, maybe you don't know, and if you don't know, that's fine. But just wanted to get a general idea of how long, um, it could take, you know, what, what's your opinion on that?
How long it should take?
Well, and I, and I only, and again, I only bring that up. Oh, I'm sorry, my bad. Um, I only bring that up in, in terms of, uh, you know, you know, we have been, uh, you know, looking at, uh, putting in a deck. Uh, you know, some people are interested in fences, and I know that needs to go through the permitting process. But, you know, if it's, if it's going to be protracted, then, you know, you know, we may not be able to do it this summer. But that's what we were trying to find out, you know, just to get a rough idea to see if it was still going to be possible. Because we certainly didn't want to, um, interrupt the, um, you know, the activities that Casey would be doing to finish off, to get the UNO done.
I wouldn't expect it to take that long. I think what this council, when, and with maybe Jay Will's input, would be if they don't show up on Wednesday, like they say, and get this done within two weeks. Uh, maybe we can look at, see what options the borough has to, to kind of force the issue. So it's done, you know, say by, uh, just pick and say, say June 1st or May 15th or something.
And let, let's make sure that they show up Wednesday. Let, let's start from there and we'll, uh, and we'll get on them.
Hey, Mr., my, my name is, uh, Will Hatch. I'm at 315 West Brookhaven Road. Mr. Heller, we, uh, had an email a couple of days ago, too.
Correct.
Uh, I just wanted to see, is sewer management, is that going to be a part of the UNO? Am I correcting that piece of it? Uh, we had Drew come out today and Drew, uh, gave me the impression that the sewer management needed some correction.
You were breaking up a little bit, but I think you said that Drew came out today.
That's correct. Drew, Drew came out today. He was, uh, here with Bob, and he looked at some of the plans as far as the sewer management is concerned. And I was under the impression, once he was leaving, the summary that I got was that the drainage system that is currently in place is, was not properly installed, or there are some additions or some corrections that need to be made to it. So I'm asking if the work that Case is going to do on Wednesday or start off on Wednesday, is that going to be a part of it?
Drew, Drew was representing Casey Lafferty on, on finishing up these, the, the, uh, site work on, on the project. So Drew, Drew told you that, that's what he's going to do. From what I, from my, uh, position, they needed to do some grading to get the stormwater runoff into the system that was, uh, constructed there, installed there. I don't think there's a problem with the system itself. It's, it's a matter of getting the, the yards to drain better into.
No issues with lines, but just, just grading, that we're saying.
Oh, Drew Lewis. It's like he gave me a card that says Catania Engineering. I was under the impression that he worked for you.
All right, by a pop, I'm getting the Drews mixed up. I apologize. There's, there's two Drews involved here. Yeah. Drew Lewis, yeah, he is, yes.
Okay.
Drew Baum is, is representing Mr. Lafferty, and I spoke to him today.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Follow up with us Wednesday after the meeting with Mr. Smith and, uh, and or seeing if they get out there and start the work, and we'll, we'll walk you through it. Any other questions?
Yes, this is Mike Chivona, 3728, um, next to Walt.
Go ahead, Mike.
Just related to the certificate of occupancy, once everything is, you know, completed satisfactorily to Mr. Catania's, um, specifications, how will that be given to us? Will be sent in the mail to us? Uh, just what's the process for us actually getting that final CO?
Yeah, you'll, you'll get a copy in the mail.
In the mail. And then related to Walt's question, so we should be holding up doing any kind of decks until we actually get the CO?
I, I recommend that. What, what we'll do is, as he finishes each lot individually, we'll, we'll issue the COs for those lots as he finishes them. Obviously, he's not going to finish them all at the same time. We'll do them. Soon as he finishes them, we'll do the inspections and issue the, the permanent COs for those properties as they're completed.
Okay, and just the reason why, as of two, two reasons. Number one, uh, the contractor's coming out next week to meet with us individually to get the schedule going. And, you know, obviously, as Walt said, we have to follow the permitting process. But the other reason is that for our specific home, we had six things on the list. It appears that all six have been done. However, we don't know that until you're, uh, Mr. Catania's office comes out and makes a final determination. But from what I can tell, uh, it seems like that's been done. I'm just wondering, do we need to wait for, for our particular home?
What's your address again?
3728 Arlington.
I'm looking at the list. Does yards need final grading? Uh, stormwater infiltration bed needs combolts in it. Water main has been adjusted. The gutter's been installed. The garage door has been complete. The street tree's been planted. So the yard final, final grading, we just need to verify it's done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that topic?
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll follow up with you, and, uh, you do same. Is there anyone else for public discussion? Please unmute yourself if you'd like to speak.
Hi, this is Mike Chivon again. Just one other issue I had that I raised, uh, in the email over the weekend. In terms of the street itself, uh, the street was excavated to install the water main in for our new houses. Uh, it's a long stretch of products, or, uh, just temporarily patched the street as well as down at the end, Borough Edwards and Arlington meet. Will anything be done with that in terms of a final, uh, repaving for that stretch of our houses, the seven houses, six house or five houses as it is on Arlington?
That's the contractor, is it not, Mr. Catania?
Yes and no. The, the contractor, again, uh, indicated he was getting in touch with this paving subcontractor to come out there and, and finish that trench restoration. Um, the rest of the street, whether, you know, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, Arlington, now that block of Arlington Avenue was on the paving list years past. It was deferred because the development was happening. So we could consider it as part of the paving program.
All right, we'll confirm that to you as we go.
Okay, thank you again for the opportunity. Uh, thank you to the borough for your help.
Absolutely. Is there anyone else for public discussion? Please unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Public discussion going once, going twice, first public discussion session is closed. Chief Montella. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council. Uh, Brookhaven Fire Company's March 2021 fire report. We had four fire incidents in the borough, 30 non-fire, 30 calls for mutual aid, five training sessions for a total of 69 for the month. We had a $500,000 loss on structure, 450,000 on contents for $950,000 loss. We had $1,200,000 of property in danger. We had no firefighter injuries and no civilian injuries. Our manpower was 69 calls, averaged 15 firefighters within service for 1,079 hours for the month, 2,241 for the year, five training sessions, average 27 firefighters, 297 hours of training allowed for the month, 689 for the year. The following incidents in Brookhaven Borough, we had two building fires. One at 4619 Edgemont Avenue involving the strip mall, including Coco's Pizza, Liberty Tax, and Rose 10 Perfect Nails. We were able to stop the fire at 420, 4206, I believe it was, or the, uh, Brookhaven Auto Center. We had a building fire at the McDonald's the same time as the building fire was going on at the strip mall. We had six motor vehicle accidents. One at Brookhaven Road in Mount Vernon. We had one at 4940 Grant Drive. One at 352 in Cambridge Road, 4206 Edgemont. 3519 Edgemont Avenue and 317 Dutton Mill Road. And we had one fuel spill at Brookhaven Road in Mount Vernon. And we assisted Upland Fire Company with one accident with entrapment at 22nd and Upland Avenue. Assisted Chester City on two building fires. One at 22, 2412 Upland Street, one at 1203 West 7th Street. Assisted Garden City Fire Company on a building fire at 13 Walnut Road. And assisted South Media Fire Company on a working building fire at 610 Markham Street. Assisted Parkside Fire Company on a building fire at 116 West Forestview Road. A monthly training was, uh, hazmat refresher training, hose line deployment. We had fit testing for our new, new SCBA's that are scheduled to come in within the next week or two. Provided COVID-19 updates for council and the mayor. And our EMS responded to 70 calls of service between the 12th of March to the 25th of March, and we had zero COVID-19 transports in that time. And that concludes my report. Uh, the only other thing I said is, uh, the fire at the, uh, strip mall is still currently under investigation. And the fire marshal can probably release some details on that as far as the investigation. Then you have, anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Chief Montella? All right, Chief Zebly.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, sir.
The Brookhaven Police, uh, for March 2021, uh, we, we have initiated or were assigned total 388 cat assignments through DOT COM. Uh, noteworthy incidents are, listen, she had two assaults, one escape incident, five theft, theft, uh, incidents. One of them was a retail theft, the other four other type thefts. Seven fraud reports, one, one terroristic threat, one narcotics incident. Uh, one public intoxication, one disorderly subject, one harassment, one trespassing. Uh, five mental health, uh, issues were responded to. The Brookhaven Police investigated 24 suspicious conditions or persons. Uh, we also responded to and resolved 38 disturbances or domestic disputes. We investigated 32 alarms and responded to, uh, 10 hazardous conditions or fire company calls. Uh, Brookhaven Police took 28 vehicle accident reports in the borough. Uh, and we assisted other departments 46 times. Uh, in total, 10 adults were arrested, three juveniles were arrested. 38 citations were issued or filed, and 14 warnings were issued. A total loss to victims in March, uh, approximate $2,314 in recovered amounts or zero. Uh, in March 2021, there were no issues with COVID, and there are officers, I'll be three months in a row. A stringent COVID mitigation plan in order remains in effect. It will so indefinitely. Uh, most officers in the department have opted to receive the vaccinations. Um, with that, uh, we, we got notification this weekend that, uh, an officer is, uh, ill with COVID.
They can hear every word I'm saying.
Officer Calso has completed the F2 program and is now on the schedule. Uh, more interviews for part-time officers were conducted, uh, in March, and polygraphs and backgrounds begun, began on one, one applicant. Uh, one background check was completed on another applicant in March, and a conditional offer was given to the applicant. Uh, he's expected to be sworn in soon, and will begin the field training program. Also, we have, uh, interviews this week for more part-time officers. We had two officer, two part-time officers resign, um, during the month of March, uh, salt employment elsewhere. And we received, uh, our upgraded portable radios from the county for training. Officer went and conducted training qualifications at the firing range for, for on-duty weapons, uh, for all survivors and myself, also Zebly. Uh, also Eastman and also Jenkins received training and certification in CPR at first aid. Uh, for community relations, uh, trading car program will be conducted soon by the police department. Uh, we're going to be scheduling photographs uh, for production. We are still waiting two new mountain police bikes for bike patrol that were ordered in December. I attended a virtual meeting with members of the Cambridge Square, um, HOA to meet and introduce ourselves and to discuss any concerns within their community. And, um, the police Facebook page is back in business. Uh, follow us for posts about updates and for community and police information. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wills, would you give us the solicitor's report, please?
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The April fifth, twenty twenty one Solicitor's Report is on file with the borough for councils and the public's review. I will touch base on a few items in that particular report. Number one concerns Brookhaven Storage. Uh, we have a new developer who has filed revised land development plans with the borough for a self-storage facility on two point four acres of undeveloped land on the south side of Brookhaven Road. The zoning officer recently, uh, filed a denial of zoning permits uh, for this particular development ostensibly for two reasons. Number one, the, uh, previous owner had received uh, approval from the zoning hearing board to construct the self-storage facility back in December of twenty nineteen. However, that approval process had lapsed, and therefore the zoning officer issued a denial. Second reason for denial by the zoning officer was because this particular proposed construction is somewhat different than the last application. Uh, this particular facility is a bit taller than the previous facility, therefore the zoning officer issued a denial. The applicant has appealed the zoning officer's determination, and that is scheduled, uh, to be heard before the zoning hearing board on April the thirteenth. I will be present with the zoning officer at that particular appeal hearing. Uh, I am quite comfortable in our position that the borough's uh, position will hopefully be sustained by the zoning hearing board. However, in the alternate, uh, and again, the applicant is seeking alternate relief, they will therefore be requesting, uh, multiple variances before the zoning hearing board. And again, as we all know, the zoning hearing board is a quasi judicial independent agency, uh, and therefore they will ultimately make their own decision on the zoning relief for the variances they are requesting. So, uh, I will be accompanying Mr. Gavin next week at that hearing and will, uh, certainly report back to council on, uh, uh, that particular zoning issue. Uh, second item on my agenda concerns the residences at Brookhaven Glen. This is our fifty five and over community off of Edgemont Avenue and Radio Lane. At this time, I have for borough council's consideration, uh, a resolution authorizing a third partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements at this particular developer, uh, at this particular development. And again, very briefly, the resolution reads as follows. Whereas the borough Brookhaven and Franklin Brookhaven LLC have entered into a development agreement which provides effective security for the completion of public improvements associated with the development project. And whereas Franklin Brookhaven LLC has established an irrevocable letter of credit with WSFS Bank in the amount of one million, eight hundred seventy eight thousand, one hundred and twenty two dollars and forty one cents as security for the completion of public improvements. And whereas Franklin Brookhaven LLC by correspondence stated March the twenty fifth, twenty twenty one has requested a partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements. Whereas the borough engineer has reviewed that particular request for escrow release and does in fact recommend an escrow release in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and forty eight dollars and eighty cents. And so therefore, be it resolved that the borough council would approve that partial escrow release again, in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and forty eight dollars and eighty cents to Franklin Brookhaven LLC for the residences at Brookhaven Glen. And so therefore, if it is the pleasure of borough council to adopt such a resolution, a motion would be in order at this time.
Who wants the motion? Who wants the second? The motion, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Third item on my agenda, Mr. President, concerns the, uh, code enforcement officer position. At borough council's request, I had drafted a code enforcement officer job summary, duties, responsibilities, uh, qualifications, and basically a skill set that the borough would be looking at. Uh, and, uh, I provided that to council. If, uh, it is council's pleasure to consider, again, the hire of a code enforcement officer or, uh, an assistant enforcement officer. Again, this would be a part-time, uh, position. Uh, other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, Mayor.
Um, I have just a small report. I would like to thank the rec board and the volunteers that, um, came out and helped get the candy bags together for our Easter drive-through and thank the residents that were able to come out on Saturday because we had such a beautiful day for it. Thank you, everyone that helped out. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items. One, I need a motion to approve the March fourth, twenty twenty one council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any questions on the minutes? Motion carries the motion to approve the March twenty second, twenty twenty one workshop meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second is second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any questions on the minutes? Motion carries. Thank you. A few additional items. I'd like to thank Giant Pharmacy, um, for partnering with with the borough of Brookhaven to bring a vaccination center to the borough. The dates for the vaccination clinic are tomorrow, four, six, nine AM to six PM, Thursday, four, eight, nine AM to six PM, Saturday, four, ten, nine to nine AM to three PM, and with the possibility of a clinic on four fifteen, nine to six PM. The first three, and if we have that fourth day, will be Pfizer with the second dose guaranteed. And there is also the potential for clinics going forward, which with what will likely be the single-dose Johnson and Johnson vaccine to hopefully inoculate the, uh, remaining population when the additional eligibility groups are opened up by the governor. So stay tuned on that. Um, I'll be up there tomorrow from nine to two thirty to see how the clinic's going. Volunteer a little bit. Get some people vaccinated. We did end up filling eight hundred and fifty appointments for the first three days with the possibility of additional three hundred and twenty on four fifteen. And it is my belief, uh, since we were legally allowed to share the link in the on the official Brookhaven Borough page first, that we got several hundred Brookhaven and Parkside residents inoculated before Giant shared it. So that is a good thing. Um, we already spoke with the group on Arlington Avenue. I have a quick appointment to appoint count to, uh, remove myself from the Brookhaven Historical Committee as chairman and appoint Councilman Michael Gilroy as Historical Committee Chair. It does not require a vote, and is an appointment by the council president. I have a hometown hearabouter update. I received the digital proofs back for the twenty five applicants on Friday. There are a whole host of mistakes, so once they are submitted for correction, they will be off for printing. And again, a reminder, the installation should take place sometime in early to mid-May. We expect to have the banners in our hands a couple of weeks prior to that. Also have to announce an executive meeting, which will be held immediately after this meeting. And the subject is a personnel matter and a mass communication system. I believe that was it. That's all I have. See you guys tomorrow. Whomever is going to be up there for the vaccination clinic. Again, thank you to Giant for making it happen. Let's save some lives tomorrow. This is Sal Wiki.
Yes, I do have the bill list for April and for the general fund, seventy five thousand, seven hundred and sixty eight dollars and seventy cents. Sower fund is one thousand, eight hundred and fifty nine dollars and fifty cents for a total of seventy seven thousand, six hundred and twenty eight dollars and twenty cents. And I'm going to make a motion to approve, um, the minutes of the bills for April. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any questions about the bill list? Motion carries. Thank you.
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Soiki. This is Fuchs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the ordinance committee will meet on Thursday, April fifteenth, and it will be an in-person meeting, not Zoom. Um, every time we try to do a Zoom meeting, I have members that are not able to, um, participate. So we're going to have an in-person, everybody will be wearing their mask and will be separated in the council room. I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Um, also, the electronics recycling event is this Saturday from nine to noon, and it's at Coburn Elementary's parking lot. Please do not go to the municipal center's parking lot. We had to change it because of the vaccination, um, clinic up there. So again, it's at Coburn Elementary's parking lot from nine to noon this Saturday. This is for electronics. The twenty fourth will be for shredding, and that will be at Brookhaven Municipal Center's parking lot again from nine to noon. So please make sure you come to Coburn this Saturday and not not the borough's parking lot. Um, I would just like to, um, say that the Easter tree giveaway was again, uh, another success. I knew it would be. And I'd like to thank the rec board, uh, the fire department, the police department, and Haley and Jeremy Heller for wearing their costumes. They're always good sports. So thanks, thanks to them for always uh, willing to do things like that for us.
You should see them.
Um, upcoming events for the rec board, we have the Concert in the Pork Series on June twentieth, July twenty first, August eighteenth, and September twenty fifth. Family Day will be Saturday, September twenty fifth, and, uh, Mr. Dykes has been working on the Family Day donation letters. And I'm sure that they'll be going out sooner than later. Um, it's always good to get give them a uh, enough time to get the donations in. Um, I also like to mention that the Providence Animal Center Chip and Vaccination Clinic that was supposed to be in our gym on May eighteenth has to be changed. That is our primary election, and I didn't realize that when I booked and confirmed. So that will be a new date. Um, I don't know what the new date will be yet, but it's not going to be on May eighteenth. And that is all of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Mr. Vaskus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, starting off with, uh, zoning, just kind of echoing Jay. Yeah, we will have a meeting the thirteenth of April at seven PM. We're going to meet, uh, just shortly before to, uh, do a quick reorg because we have two new members. I would like to, uh, make a motion to bring onto the board. I have a Gary Hastings. I would like to bring on as a zoning hearing board alternate and a Patrick Thompson for an alternate position as well.
All right, let's motion for the, uh, for the first member. What was the name again?
Gary Hastings.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's your first meeting, guys?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And the second one will be for a, uh, Patrick Thompson.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second is second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Pat will be a good addition. I knew Pat will. Good choice.
So, um, congratulations to those two new members. We look forward to, uh, having you onboard. That's all I have for zoning for Public Works. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is welcome back, uh, James Loftus and Josh Trustee as, uh, seasonal employees. They'll be beginning net this this upcoming Monday as seasonal employees for the summer. Uh, they hopefully they continue their great work that they branched off with with the fall program that we had for our seasonal employees. Getting into the, uh, March report for Public Works, we have three sewer backups, one at three sixteen Brookhaven Road. Uh, the issue was with the homeowner. We had one at forty three thirteen Mount Vernon. Issue was with the homeowner. And we had another one at forty five forty Marion Drive. The issue is with the homeowner as well. Uh, taking advantage of the nice weather, we cleaned out nine, nine sections of the, uh, sanitary sewer mains on East Brookhaven Road, Ridge and Barlow. For sinkholes for the year, uh, we had one sinkhole at forty eight oh six Shepherd. We di tested it with no issues to report. Thirty seven forty seven Susan. The hole was di tested around the sanitary sewer lateral. The issue is with the homeowner, not the borough. We had another sinkhole at, uh, three oh eight Melvin Drive. The issue is with the Chester Water Authority. We have another, uh, sinkhole at forty eight oh three Alpha Shepherd. The issue is also with the Chester Water Authority. The Whitley Road plate locks are now installed and stone backfilled in the hole. For parks, uh, we went around, cleaned up everything, trying to get everything ready for the baseball season. You know, finally had some nice weather, so a lot of people are going to start using the park, so we got to get everything up to snuff. And we're aware of that, and we're working on it. Got all the picnic benches out to all the parks. We had a, uh, the American flags were installed at Durkin Memorial. For the first quarter, chipping uh, is now complete. Twenty five stops were logged. If you need anything else, please, you know, contact the borough. We'll get the guys out to you for chipping. We had our our team go out on the roof of building two in a sewer plant to repair the, uh, the leak that was up there. Forty six PA one call tickets were answered. Year-to-date is ninety seven. We fixed two signs, one at East Garrison and Roberts Drive. The second one was a Watch Children's sign on Kennedy Lane. We filled up five potholes using two hundred and fifty pounds of cold patch. Our year-to-date is forty six bags, two thousand three hundred and fifty pounds. The Public Works team, uh, cleaned up the trash along the fence line that we talked about during the workshop. Uh, that amount of trash that was collected was four hundred pounds and thirty bags. And the department conducted two hours of hands-on training and up maintenance and operation of the, uh, brush banded chipper. And that's, uh, that's the end of my report for Public Works.
Thank you, sir. Mr.
Mr. President, can I say something real quick?
Um, you may.
I omitted a part of my report.
Go ahead.
Um, so on our website, we had added a section under quick links. It's called Borough Codes and Ordinances. If you click that, that is now E-code, and within that, you'll see a search box. And if you type in whatever, uh, you know, keywords you're looking whatever, you know, keywords you're looking for for ordinances, all the ordinances that have those keywords will will appear, and it makes it very simple to find what you're looking for. So, again, this is brand-new on our website. It is part it is part of E-code. Um, it's very simple to find it. Again, it's on the left side under quick links. Um, and if you want to provide feedback to me, I would appreciate any and all feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pap has had some technical difficulties. I don't believe he was able to make it on. So, this is Heller.
Thank you. Um, the Technology Committee is meeting this Thursday for eight at seven o'clock, and that will be for an in-person meeting in the community room. Obviously, all social distancing guidelines will be followed. Uh, the Parade Committee um did not meet this month, nor I think it will be meeting next month. I think we start those meetings kind of closer to June. Uh, but I'll keep everyone posted. Um, for the rec board, baseball and T-ball have been practicing the last few weeks. Their season starts this upcoming week. There's not going to be a um parade, but it has been talked to do a end-of-the-season type of celebration. They're still working. Both organizations are still working on what that would look like. We have a few outstanding items left, and Public Works has been um doing a phenomenal job of getting the stuff done. They're looking at the T-ball uh benches, T-ball team benches at Memorial Field. Um, they're in a little bit of a uh need of repair. Backstop is completed, other than a question about the hood that I will leave to Mr. Catania for his uh expert advice if the hood is going to be required. We're working on orange temporary construction fencing for the spectators for all fields for the baseball softball season. Um, Public Works will be putting them up um for a physical barrier for the actual players for as well as any spectators or parents. That is going to be done within the next week, weekend and a half. And we have an uh quote, actually, um, a job there at Sampson Park. Yes, Sampson Park to move on electricals, uh relocation of electrical switch to the shed. So, that's in progress as well. Um, I want to echo the mayor and and Mrs. Fuchs in reference to the Easter egg giveaway this Saturday. It was a wonderful event. Great, great community outturn, and uh thank you to the fire department as well as the police department, Public Works, uh, the rec board, and all their volunteers to make it a huge success. I want to have a special shout-out to Charles Allen from um Bateman and Allen Funeral Home. He is one of the members of our record, and he went out and talked to numerous businesses, and um, they were able to donate some um candy. So, those businesses are Walgreens, Sonny and Kathy from AM AMF Auto Clinic, Charles and Eve from Bateman and Allen Funeral Home, Rob from Samuel's Construction, and Josh from JP Electric. So, um, on top of what the Borough donated, we had all those businesses also donate to um to that event. Um, and that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. Mr. Gilroy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you for appointment to the chair of us Historical Committee. Uh, it's an honor.
Sure. With that, we will um, you'll have to pick a time and day, get with the um the Historical Committee members, which I'll send to you, and you guys can all decide on a day because it has to be advertised.
Absolutely.
I'll send it to you. Send that list to you, I should say.
Just wanted to give a reminder for the Brookhaven Hometown Hero Car Show, Saturday, May twenty-ninth from ten A M. to two P M. Beacon entry fee is twenty dollars free admission for spectators. Uh, we're extremely excited to partner with the Delco Cruisers. So, that's about it there. A quick report there, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Catania, give us the engineer's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I see on my agenda is one twenty-one Schoolhouse Lane, offset pipe and street broken street lateral, meet authorization for repair. Ask council to consider approving that repair, subject to review of the uh video inspection of that lateral.
You're asking for authorization now. You're asking for authorization after it's televised.
I I think I I prefer, well, I'll let you up the council, but I think I I would ask that they authorize the repair subject to that review. So, we don't need to wait another month for this for this problem to be addressed.
Okay, we can do that. Who wants it?
I'll take it.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, on on Arbor Developers, this is the two new homes that are scheduled to be constructed on Zor Street. Uh, we we haven't asked for one place for the uh extension of Zor Street. Ask council to consider approving municipal improvement escrow for lot one, the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars plus thirteen hundred dollars for inspection. And for lot two at thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars plus thirteen hundred dollars for inspection.
Who wants the motion? Would that be two separate motions?
Mr. Wills?
I I would prefer to have two separate motions.
Chuck, reread the first, please.
All right. Arbor Developers for Zor Street for Lot One said that municipal escrow at thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars plus thirteen hundred dollars for inspection.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
Arbor Developers Lot Two on Zor Street.
Janice, did you have a comment?
No, I want to make the motion for the next one.
Okay. Go ahead, Charles. I'm sorry.
For lot for lot two on Zor Street for Arbor Developers, the escrow will be set at thirteen thousand three hundred sixty dollars plus thirteen hundred dollars for inspections.
Miss that Wiki?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Uh, the Whitley Road storm cover replacement. We received bids for that project. We received eight bids ranging from sixty-seven thousand dollars to one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. Going to recommend award to G and B Construction of Willow Grove, a low bid amount of sixty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion, but can I have a question?
Go ahead, Janice.
How long do you think it will take to complete that job roughly?
I would say thirty. I would say thirty days, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to check. Thank you.
I've got a motion.
And we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
The twenty-twenty-one street resurfacing program. In my report last week, I I included a copy of of streets that were given to us by the Public Works and leftover from last year. We raided those streets, and I'm going to ask council to consider authorizing a bid to address the streets that are rated as the the top priority. And if you want, I can read them off. If you want to skip that part, I can do that as well.
Read it. Read them off, please.
All right, so we have Greenwood Avenue from forty-eight seventeen to forty-eight forty-nine. Coburn Boulevard from Shepherd to Chandler, Chandler to Greenwood, and Greenwood to Grant. Sir Gala Head from Camelot to Lancelot. Trimble Boulevard from Washington to number one thirty-three and from Washington to two oh-five. And number four set on just still on Trimble Boulevard, four seventeen to five twenty-six. We have Mount Vernon Road from Upland to Washington and Washington to thirty-four twenty-three Mount Vernon. Meadow Brook from numbers one thirty-five to one eighty-nine. Sweeney Circle, the intersection with Mount Vernon. And Arlington Avenue from thirty-seven twenty-two to Edwards.
You need a motion authorized bidding?
Please.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. I didn't mean to make you read them all, but for those watching the meeting, um, you know, it'll help anyone that has questions about their street.
I assume the same. Thank you. Uh, the only other thing I want to mention is, um, I've mentioned this in the past, the their treatment plant, we were required to do this sewer system evaluation, and we had authorized a contract with Duke's Technologies. They are going to start the work on the week of April nineteenth, so you'll see some activity over in that uh neighborhood, probably for about a week or so. So, that's all I have.
Public heads up. Thank you, sir. Fire Marshal's report. Mr. Leslie, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, and the people from the public listening and watching. Uh, just a couple of things here. Papa John's is almost ready for a final. Should be maybe at the end of the week, if not early next week. Wawa is over there upgrading their uh over. Farmers Insurance has moved into forty-one Teenage Mine Avenue. Uh, Liberty Tax moved in. Uh, the nails nail and spa at four thousand one Edgemont Avenue should be opening. And uh I guess this is for Mr. Gavin or Mr. Wills, uh, just a just a question. Uh, the footprint over there at the storage facility, did you guys catch that on the print? That they were going to enlarge it and increase the height of the building, or is something that they brought to your attention?
Yeah, we know.
That is, it's for Mr. Wills or Mr. Gavin.
Sorry. He's on the land development plan, sir, that show an increased height.
So, do we know what that was, Mr. Wills or Mr. Gavin?
I believe it's approximately seven to eight feet higher, sir.
Okay, just so we stay within the limit of that ordinance that we have. There is an ordinance out there for that.
There is.
Okay, it was a good catch. Thank you. And uh we're stumbling upon these as we go into these as we go into these uh commercial properties. Maybe John Wilwood could uh uh get on a little bit more with uh the tax ID records. I know Mary used to catch them monthly when there was a change of uh property, uh, change of uh ownership on these commercial properties. Mary would give them to us, the inspectors, so we could get in there and get on top of that.
You get the statement when there's a transfer tax.
I don't see no statement.
Either way, the tax the tax records come from the Borough. Mary used to grab them and see that there was a change of ownership there, and that would alert us inspectors to be on top of that and get out there.
All right, hold on, hold on a minute. Mr. Hold on a minute. Mr. Wilwood, would you like to comment to that?
Yes, I at first, I don't, I've never seen one of them, and I don't know where they're coming from. So, I have no way of doing that unless I find out where they're coming from. Uh, so I didn't know anything about it, or I would have done.
Understand I understand that. I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying, I don't know where Mary got it from, but she got them on a monthly basis that alerted the inspectors to be on top of those change of uh ownership.
Okay, well, I'm not Mary, so I have to try to find out to be Mary and find it. I I don't, that's the first time I've ever heard of that being done.
John, maybe maybe uh you can talk to someone at the county.
I'll find out.
We'll figure it out. Is there is there a particular business in 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 question?
There there are several businesses that change, and we don't know about it, so we can get them a propercy of up.
Sure, it's almost like when they leave, they just kind of leave in the middle of the night. We we're not notified. I didn't I didn't realize that. And one business was brought to my attention today. That's why I was asking. I didn't know that there was three. Yeah, we'll we'll look into a process to where we get notified.
Well, don't 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 these new businesses have to notify um Brookhaven when they're going in?
I I think the 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 issue, the issue that I was uh I was made aware of was it was a business that changed hands uh from brother to brother. It was not a new business. It was a it was a
I would not know that.
Transfer of energy. I just found out an hour before the meeting, tonight's meeting.
The office, uh, office would not know a brother-to-brother transfer. I mean, you know, the 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 business owner has a responsibility to notify the Borough when this is going on, and I mean, if I wait for a transfer with COVID, who knows when I'm going to get the information from the county.
I I understand that. I'm just just asking.
Okay, move on. We'll move on. We'll figure it out. We're wasting the public's time.
And uh that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just have to report that I have nine zoning applications uh for the month. Um, they have been approved, and I also did post the Brookhaven Storage Property on three thirty-one uh twenty-one for the April thirteenth hearing, just uh for record. Um, I shared that with zoning hearing board and Mr. Wills also. And that is all I have for my reports, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Leads us to the second public discussion session. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please unmute yourself.
Tom Dykes. Jamie Terry.
Addresser.
Tom Dykes, three oh-five West Brook Haven Road.
Good evening, Tom.
Hello there. Uh, on behalf of the rec board, I'd like to thank um the fire company, the Chief Zebly, Mayor Leslie, council members, uh Heller and Heller, as well as uh Mrs. Fuchs, um, Mr. Wilwood, the Heller children for helping out with the uh Easter treat giveaway on Saturday.
I'll drop them off tonight.
Everyone had a great time. Uh, we had approximately two hundred and fifty children that came out. Uh, it was really good that way. Uh, I do have a uh some sad news, I guess it would be. Um, we need to accept resignations from uh Sherry Walters and Rob Walters from the rec board. So, I guess we we need a motion for those for those resignations. They just can't do it with their new work schedules.
All right, I'll ask for the mo I'll ask for the motion to accept the resignation of Sherry Walters from the Brookhaven Recreation Board. We have a motion, and uh Mrs. Fuchs, you can make that the second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Motion to accept the resignation of, it was Rob Walters, correct, Mr. Dykes?
Correct.
Rob Walters for the Brookhaven Recreation Board.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thanks.
Okay, and one last thing is uh besides, or actually two things. One is the uh first summer concert is scheduled for Saturday, a Father's Day weekend, June the twentieth. And the band that will be playing that night is our uh one of our resident bands, uh, Mr. LaPera's band. Um, will be there. So, look forward to that. That should be from five to eight. I think, yeah, five to eight that night. Um, and then lastly that I have to bring up is we will be starting uh to reorganize the Family Day Committee. Uh, or have to get through Harry, but I think right now we're planning on a meeting on April the fourteenth at seven o'clock is what we're looking at, so Wednesday evening for reorganization for the Family Day uh Cup Committee. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good job on Saturday. Is there anyone else for public discussion?
I'm sorry, I just have one thing to add.
Go ahead.
The additional um bags that were left over were donated to um the real church, and softball and baseball are going to be using them for their first games. So, the candy did not go to waste.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else for public discussion? Please unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Public discussion going once, going twice. Public discussion is closed. Is there anything from council or the officials that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I I do have one thing I want to add.
Go ahead, Mr. Vaskus.
I forgot to uh mention, I need a uh motion to accept the resignation of Barry Durham from the zoning hearing board.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you for your service, Mr. Derm- Durham. Sorry, did you name wrong? All right, public discussion is closed. Without a last for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. See you all tomorrow at the Max Clinic and see the rest of you on four twenty-six for the workshop.
Take care, everybody.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.